Hello, are we ready? I call this public hearing back to order. I'd like to introduce Americans of the council here, our present this evening, except for all present. On my left is, far left, Roger Hoppin, Division 3. Shane Hansen, Division 1. Mike Moose, Division 7. My right, Dennis Severus, Division 6. Cam Francis, Division 4. myself, Boye Curl, Division 5. I'd like to remind everyone that while councils represent areas of Carson County, they are empowered to act in the best interest of the entire municipality. Oh, Fred Lacy, sorry about that. Let's move over further here. The lights have went out, that's good. We have Fred Lacy here, from Division 2. In addition, there's county staff present this evening. Our Chief Administrative Officer, Ray Milner, wave your hand there. County Planner, Diane Horvath, an old member of Regional Services Division. Recordant Secretary, Jennifer Beazer. County Development Officer, Joshua Corredo. The purpose for a public hearing is to ensure that there is an orderly process for councils to receive input from everyone who wishes to be heard. The council asks that presentations be limited and focused only on land use planning matters as they relate to this proposed land use bylaw. The hearing this evening will follow the following process. After my comments, it's time we turn over to administrative staff for a normal review of the bylaw being considered during this evening, during this hearing. The administration reads out a list of names of persons who have submitted a letter for the public hearing. When the list's names have been read, if you wish to read the letter or a letter on behalf of someone, please raise your hand, administration will add your name to the presenters list. When everyone understands that all council has provided copies of your letters, letters that have been given to the county, the council will consider them in an effort to proceed on a timely manner, and we will read it to the records where everyone understands what these letters are. If someone's not here to read the letter, we'll read it in very shortly. Finally, any other members of the public who wish to address council laws would be given an opportunity to speak. That's after the list of the, we have 22 people who phoned in saying they want to address council, we'll have those people first. Firstly, we'll read letters, then we do these 22 people, then anyone else wants to speak. This time, I would ask Mrs. Horvath, please provide a brief overview of the bylaw, and she or someone else from administration provide a rationale for it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Again, this public hearing is to consider representation on proposed bylaw 653.2013, which has been proposed through Land Use Bylaw of Carson County. Municipal Government Act, Part 17, Section 640, requires that every municipal council adopt a land use bylaw to regulate and control the use and development of land and buildings within its boundaries. Provincial government sets out the essential requirements with components found in the land use bylaw, and these generally include dividing municipality into districts, prescribing the uses of land and buildings that are permitted or discretionary in each district. It must establish the number of dwelling units permitted on a parcel. It must establish a process for reviewing development permit applications and making decisions and issuing permits. The bylaw must define the types of permits that may be issued, the application process, a process for refusing or approving permits. The time of permit remains in effect, and the discretion powers of an approving authority either the development officer or the municipal planning commission may exercise. And finally, the bylaw must provide for how and to whom the listed development permit approval or refusal is to be given. The county gave first reading to the proposed bylaw on May 13th, 2013. Sections 230, 606, and 692 of the Municipal Government Act prescribe the necessary notification of a mandatory public hearing prior to council considering any further reading of the bylaw. Section 606.2 requires that municipal government either publish at least once a week, in two consecutive weeks, in at least one escape or other publication circulating in the area to which the proposed bylaw hearing is to be held, or manually deliver to evidence in the area to which the proposed bylaw hearing is to be held. The county advertised in the Carson Temple City Star, May 30, and there was a wrong date in that notice, so in subsequent weeks, June 6th and June 13th, the notice was in newspaper. Again, the notices required be advertised at least five days before this public hearing, and that requirement has been met. Again, the notice was prepared, issued in accordance with 606, so it's actually 6 of the Municipal Government Act. Again, in addition to that, the county, a mail notice was dropped to county residents at the time and place of the public hearing, with contact information for rape, to call administration, administration, myself, to discuss any questions or concerns regarding the bylaw and how it affected landowners. Again, to the technical area, the day and date of the second notice was subsequently mailed out. In addition, on May 21st, 2013, a letter was sent to the following adjacent municipalities, the following government departments and referral agencies, asking for formal comments on the land use bylaw. These included the County of Northridge, the MD of Pincher Creek, County of Warner, MD of Willow Creek, Town of Parkston, Town of Brad, Village of Hillspring, Village of Glenwood, the Blood Tribe, and Waterton Lakes National Park. And in addition, the following agencies: Telus, AquaGas, AquaPipelines, Chief Mountain Gas Limited, Outlink Management, Alberta Environment and Sustainable Resource Development, Alberta Transportation, Alberta Agriculture, Alberta Health Services, Westwind School Division, Yatna Arivation District, Leaven Arivation District, Mapview Arivation District, and finally, the Raymond Arivation District. We have received comments back from four of those agencies. Don't indulge me, I'll read those letters into the record. We have received information from Alberta Transportation, and dated June 10th, 2013. The department has received and reviewed the proposed land use bylaw 653.2013, of which was prepared on behalf of Carson County. The department's primary objective is to allow subdivision and development properties that are subject to review and comment by the department pursuant to the control lines stipulated in the Highways Development Protection Regulation, being Alberta Regulation 326/2009, and the Subdivision and Development Regulation, being Alberta Regulation 43.2002. In a manner that will not compromise the integrity or associated state operational uses with the future expansion of the provincial highway system. To that end, the document is well organized, thoroughly covers all issues that are pertinent when establishing a framework to subsequent land use redesignation, subdivision, and development within the plan area. The document would appear to have been prepared on sound planning principles and development strategies. Given it foregoing strictly from Alberta Transportation's point of view, we may not have any questions or any concerns with the draft land use bylaw as proposed, and with the document being adopted by Carson County Land Use Authority, please provide a copy of the plan and adopt it. Bruce Trulie, Bea Olson, Development Planning Technologists. We've also received a letter from the County of Warner, it was dated June 11th, 2013. Read draft land use bylaw of Carson County. Please be advised the County of Warner has no concerns with the above proposed bylaw. Thank you for the opportunity to respond. Sean Hathaway, Administrator. We have one from the MD of Pincher Creek, dated June 12th, 2013. Thank you for the opportunity to comment in the Carson County Draft Land Use Bylaw. After the review of the proposed land use bylaw by our planning staff, Municipal District of Pincher Creek, Number 9, has no concerns. Should require further information or clarification, please do not hesitate to contact us. Golden Milligan, Director of Development and Community Services, MD of Pincher Creek. Our final one came from AquaPipelines, proposed draft land use bylaw of Carson County. Engineering Department of AquaPipelines has reviewed above being planned, and has no objection subject to the following conditions. Any Aqua Pipeline existing right of ways or board orders or other rights shall be carried forward in kind and registered on any newly created lots, public utility lots, or other properties. Aqua Pipelines right of ways are not to be absorbed into residential subdivision lots, but is to be on a separate utility lot created for Aqua Pipeline school use. This condition is required by Aqua Pipeline to minimize approachness onto Aqua Pipeline right of way easements, and provide awareness to adjacent landowners that a high pressure pipeline may exist, and to minimize third party damage to Aqua Pipeline high pressure pipelines. Any work of any nature whatsoever affecting the surface of Aqua Pipeline right of ways must first receive approval from Aqua Pipelines. No part of an Aqua Pipeline right of way is to be used in road right of ways other than at a perpendicular crossing. If there is an existing Aqua Pipeline, pipeline area in this, pipeline in this area, it should be necessary to lower, relocate, or make any alterations for existing pipelines due to the subdivision, all costs be borne by the developer or owner. Drainage for Aqua Pipelines above ground measures should be maintained. If alterations are required, the costs shall be borne by the developer. Any ground disturbance within 15 meters of an existing Aqua Pipeline, high pressure pipeline, or right of way will be required a costing agreement. Grabbing parking or storage will not be permitted on Aqua Pipeline right of ways. Page parking may be allowed on pipeline right of ways, however, plans must be submitted to Aqua Pipelines. For further review and approval, must be Aqua Pipeline's development guidelines, and Aqua Pipelines reference a 15 meter setback in the central line of pipelines in any buildings. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact another sign. Joanne Metzickel, from the Engineering Department of Aqua Pipelines. So, it is a brief overview of the bylaw itself. The document is out in its entirety, including cover pages, table contents, divider pages, maps, administrative policy, land use regulations, standards of development, definitions, forms, has approximately 308 pages of length, although the new bylaw is longer in length than the current bylaw. I believe it provides greater detail and clarity to both administration and the Municipal Planning Commission when making decisions, and to applicants when submitting applications. Brief summary of the major changes, again, this is a generating page document, so I don't know if you can all make, but we have several sections that I can break this down into. We have an updated administrative section. Again, this section clearly defines the development officer's role, municipal planning commission's role, and council's role in planning and development. We've added information on non-conforming uses and suitability of site. We've also included a new section on second dwelling unit policies that didn't exist prior. There's a new section on development decision making, including clear process for both refusal and approval of applications. There's an enforcement section that's been expanded to better explain the appeal process, hearings, and what that decision would be like. There's a new section on various permissions. It allows the development officer a waiver of 10% upon measurable standards, for example, a front yard setback could be granted by the development officer. Anything over 10% would be required to go to the Municipal Planning Commission. Again, there's finally a new section on land use bylaw amendments, and the requirements for application, so what information the council would like to see for that. The second major section in the bylaw is land use districts and their maps themselves. So there is new mapping provided in this bylaw, and it reflects the new districts that have been created. So again, it takes up approximately 42 pages of the bylaw as well. There has been changes made to several hamlet boundaries, to bring some things into compliance. We've had some areas where we have properties that are both inside and outside of the hamlet, so rationalize those boundaries based on titles. The other major sections we talked about is the land use regulations. So again, we've updated the land use districts. Each district is more robust, and we try to incorporate development standards that apply to each district, which reduce the flipping between schedules. So again, there is a lot of repetition, but again, from administrative point of view, we're able to pull one section out of the bylaw and be able to provide it to a rape pair, and they have all the information that you need to develop state perhaps in the A district, or a country residential district, rather than getting several pieces of paper thrown throughout the bylaw. Again, a major change, we split the former agricultural districts into two A districts based on proximity to both roads. Again, we've limited subdivision in the agriculture farm grant to the A1 district, and we allow for 88 parcels and developed farm states to be removed. As proposed, any vacant parcels will be required to be rezoned. Subdivision policies in the A2 district are very similar to our previous policies of parcels per quarter section, so that hasn't changed. Again, developed farm values are eligible for subdivision, but vacant parcels again will be required to be rezoned. Single up country residential, again, has been expanded to include those vacant parcels. We split the group country residential district into three districts. We have a group country residential 1, that allows for contiguous lots on private services on parcels from three to five acres. We have a group 2, which allows for contiguous lots from one to four on private services again, from parcel sizes from 10 to 40, so that's a new district. Finally, we have a group country residential 3 district, that allows for group lots on communal services from a quarter acre to an acre lot. The hamlet district has remained the same, but new uses have been added to round out the commercial portions of a hamlet. We've split the old industrial, commercial district into a rural business district and a rural industrial district, and moved uses as per the type of, if it's a commercial industry, it's been moved into that particular category. Again, we've added an alternate energy district to deal with our wind farms, so any existing windmills, winter lands, we'd have this zoning on it, and any future ones would also be required to zone that new district. The rural recreational district has remained the same, but we have added some additional uses to that. We have created a new parkson recreational district, which we utilize to identify public and quasi-public park spaces, as well as provincial parks and recreational areas. Finally, we have a public service district, which is for public uses, which would be waste transfer sites, sewage levers, water treatment plants, those types of things that are currently found in the agricultural districts, so we're making them their own district. Again, of course, the bylaw, our schedules on development not required permits, so whether exempt from county development permits. The schedule on general standard of development, so again, this standards that are applicable to development in the county. We've added a schedule, or we've got a schedule on alternate energy individual standards, so these are for individual turbines or solar panels, those types of things that are using that are not in a commercial use. We also have some standards on manufactured and built-in homes and building standards. We've included some information on shipping containers, and how those would fit into our community. We have moved the existing signed bylaw into the bylaw, so we've incorporated it, so it's a one-stop shop. We're not looking to set the bylaw for that. We have included definitions, and this is something that was new, we've tried to make sure that every use that's listed in a district has actually been defined in the definition section. That's moved our definitions from around six pages to 31 pages. Finally, we have sections of the bylaw that don't actually form part of the bylaw, but are for information purposes. Those would be our application forms, so we've done new forms for all types of development within the county. Again, we have a section on technical studies, so if someone was asked to marry a structure plant, for example, we tried as the county to define what that is. And finally, we've done a schedule on telecommunications towers, those are actually regulated by the federal government, and therefore, instead of issuing permits for them, the industry Canada has indicated that they would prefer a concurrent protocol, which allows for public consultation, and that consultation to go directly to the county council, and they would either concur with the location of the telecommunications tower, or provide information on why they would want it there. So, my hands, Mr. Reed, that's the bylaw, that's quickly summarized.
Josh, if you have anything you want to add as far as some rationale, this bylaw.
Thank you. I can read the letters that we've received from the rape pairs to date, and read those in there. So this is from Clinton Blackmore. So this is from Clinton Blackmore. He says, Dear Reed and councilors, I write concerning the draft land use bylaw. My name is Clinton Blackmore. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to house sit for Villain Mary Simon while they serve the mission. My wife and I dream of having a place in the country of our own one day and living as self-sufficient as we can. I'm distressed to hear that some people have organized a smear campaign against Marianne O'Word and find this to be saddening, for I know him to be of integrity and sound character. I've conversed with people about town who write off concerns about the bylaws being baseless, believing the people have been stirred up by griefers, and I wish to assure you that I do not side with these people and that my concerns are my own. I gather that the proposed bylaw imposes many restrictions, making it harder for a small landowner, one who owns acre to a hobby farm, to build up buildings, raise animals, live off of it, or do the sorts of things that a person would move to a county to do. This is my concern. I fail to understand why I should support a curtailment of my freedoms and therefore do not. I tend to believe that simpler sets of rules form effective governance, being less brittle and more likely to be obeyed than endlessness of restrictions. I would like to thank you for your time and hearing me and for your efforts to preserve the county as a great place to live, Clinton Blackmore. This is a letter from Jacqueline and Peter Morris. Dear councilors, regarding draft land use bylaw 653.2013. Having read your draft land use bylaw 653.2013 and attended an open house regarding this aim, we wish to first commend you, the Carson County administrative staff, and Diane Moore about the Old Land River Regional Services Commission for all the hard work you obviously put into completing this document. As residents of the Boundary Creek area, we are heathen aware of the threats inadvertent development projects can pose. As outlined in Cliff Wallace's report, which was presented to Carson County Council at the June 20th, 2012 public hearing regarding the proposed LDS youth camp development in this area, the Boundary Creek area is of high environmental value for the following reasons. One, under the Natural Regions Landscape Classification System, open in HARS 2010, the Boundary Creek area is located in the Flute Hills Parkland and Montane Natural Subregions Protected Areas. Two, part of the nationally significant Environmentally Significant Area, ESA, Site Number One, rests within the Boundary Creek area. The regionally significant Environmentally Significant Areas, ESAs, of both Lee Creek and Boundary Creek Springs lie completely within the Boundary Creek area. The South Saskatchewan River Basin Advisory Council's land use recommendation for the Boundary Creek area is native range land grazing. And finally, the Prairie Conservation Forum's Prairie Conservation Action Plan 2011 identified the Boundary Creek area as being a high-value landscape of high value for conservation. Given the above information, it is obvious that Boundary Creek is a significant environmental area, and as such, it requires safeguarding via strong stewardship. For this reason, we strongly suggest that you consider zoning the entire Boundary Creek area as agriculture farmer ranch, A1, regardless of the property's distance from the county road. This designation would significantly limit the allowable uses and would assist in preserving this landscape, which is so highly valued locally, provincially, and nationally. Secondly, we have significant concerns regarding the public and institutional use designation being an allowable discretionary use under both agriculture farmer ranch, A1, and agriculture general, A2. While we were told at the open house this use was included primarily to accommodate the construction of new schools and or churches on Carson County's many heritage colonies, the definition does not make this clear, and it leaves the door open for a wide variety of development projects by a wide variety of groups. If it is Carson County's desire to accommodate the heritage colonies' needs, surely a more applicable but restricted use could be defined that relates specifically to the heritage colonies and their communal lifestyle. We would suggest something such as a school and cemetery use. Thank you for considering our suggestions. We look forward to reviewing the final version of Carson County's new land use bylaw. Respectfully submitted, Jacqueline Morris. This is from Kaylee Blackmore. To whom it may concern, while we are not current landowners in the Carson County, I would love to be in the future. We are house-sitting for the next year and a half and always have an eye out for a place to call our own in the country. However, we are very concerned about the bylaws that have been recently drafted. One of the joys of living in the country is more freedom. I feel more bylaws would not give residents more freedom. What would a reasonable solution be? Perhaps the drafted bylaws could be used as guidelines for addressing concerns that actually do come up and come to the county for resolution, as a person-by-person or case-by-case scenario. But that, in general, people have the freedom to act in good conscience. Perhaps a list of good practice that encompasses the thoughts of these bylaws, sorry, perhaps a list of good practice that encompasses the thoughts of these bylaws, that doesn't force all people in all scenarios to adhere to them under while. Thank you for all your work and concern. We look forward to joining the fine people of Carson County as soon as we can, Kaylee This is from David Nelson. To Carson County, I am writing in response to the notice of public hearing letter I received in the mail, which addresses the upcoming hearing regarding the land use bylaw 653.2013. To begin with, it is very difficult for the average working person to be able to find time and sift through a three-hundred-and-seven-page document. I downloaded the document, but would have to take a week off of work to sift through it and become familiar with just what it is this land use bylaw would entail. I have talked to many who are in the same situation and feel it unfair to push something like this through without the public having more time to adjust the issues at hand and decide whether to agree or oppose. I plan on further familiarizing myself with this document, but in my opinion, I would deem it unwise to go forward with this bill at this time without further extensive input from Carson County residents. I received a flyer in the mail, which addresses some of the flaws of this massive document. The flyer states that Carson County has eight million dollars in reserves. I cannot support more restrictions and lessening of county services when the county is clearly not acting for cash reserves. Just one example of lessening of services is the county's unwillingness to help out with free gravel every second or third year for eight parish driveways, which this county used to do. If services continue to decline, tax rates should also decrease. While I do see the need for a monetary reserve in order for the county to remain viable, it must be remembered that these reserves come from the pockets of county ratepayers, many of whom themselves have to work very hard to remain viable. High taxes do not help matters and restrict businesses and their potential for growth. Unwise spending of these resources by county administrators, coupled with arduous and excessive restrictions, leave a bitter taste in the mouth of ratepayers. I also agree with the statement in this flyer that if residents and ratepayers want to discover the numerous devils in those details, they are required to download the new bylaw from the Oarse website, which for such a massive document, many do not have the internet or computer capacity to do so. The same flyer also mentions that this monstrous bylaw was drafted by the Old Land River Regional Services Commission instead of seeking the public's input in advance. If this is true, I am ashamed of the Carson County. In an age of ever-increasing government interference and domination over people's lives, I am angered to see the same mindset so prevalent even at the local level. Governments exist to serve the people, not vice versa. When government control becomes sole owners, that choice becomes a very limited option for people, the government has stepped far over the boundaries. The ratepayers and residents of this county elect members who they feel will serve them when they take office. If this does not happen, the residents have a right to voice their concerns and a right to be heard. I am told that Carson County has adopted the most stringent level of development laws possible under Alberta legislation. In the case of septic fields, for instance, it is unbelievable now how much some systems cost in order to comply with government regulations. Surely Carson County must have a long list of septic system failures to warrant such sweeping measures. Is there such a list, and if so, where can it be obtained? If the county is so sure of this three-hundred-and-seven-page document, which will affect every ratepayer and resident of its boundaries, I feel I must be prepared to explain it very well at the upcoming meeting on June 19th, 2013. If it is still lurking in the minds of many after this meeting, I feel more meetings will be warranted, the purpose of which will be to inform the public of what is being proposed and create a detailed transparency. I find it unfair to ask the public for their input on something so large without their being able to sift through it all. If it is very simple and straightforward, then the county should have no trouble explaining it in great transparency and detail at the aforementioned upcoming meeting. If it cannot be explained simply at this meeting, then this tells me it is too complex to be pushed through quickly. If the county wants input, they should be prepared to assist the public in determining just what they are even going to put on.
I'll start reading the next set of letters, but I just want to make one clarification with regards to septic and the requirements for septic. Those are provincial regulations, and the county has no say in the standards that are required for the installation and operation of septic fields. The next letter is from Calvin and Joanna Irwin. Dear Reed, Carson County Draft Land Use Bylaw. We understand that the above-noted bylaw is scheduled for a public hearing June 19th, 2013, and then be eligible to pass the law. While there are many aspects of this bylaw that are concerned to us, through previous conversations with staff, we've been given to believe that these items are non-negotiable at this time. Therefore, we focus on the objects prohibited and restricted, objects prohibited and restricted in the arts, in the various domains without one in Schedule II. The bylaw proposes that no more than two recreational vehicles shall be stored or parked in a parcel unless otherwise approved by the municipal planning commission. We inquired about the open houses and received a copy of the survey and responses that were handed out during the two open houses held, where there was less than one percent of the county's population attended. We also received a copy of the handout provided at the open house. Neither the summary nor the survey or any advertisements that we have seen detail the significant new rule that only two recreational vehicles will be allowed in a parcel. Should this be passed, should this bylaw be passed as-is without prior approval from the municipal planning commission? As we inquired as to the reasoning behind this restriction to the bylaw, we have been told that the reason for the restriction is due to a specific problem of illegal for-profit use of land by someone who is operating without a permit or these stored facilities and for a for-profit campground, and that is not intended to unduly restrict the ratepayers from unnecessary restrictive conditions. However, the law is a law regardless of the intent, so we urge you to please reconsider this restriction, what this restriction will do to your ratepayers. Restricting the limit to two seems unduly excessive. We ask for your consideration to amend the bylaw to make the maximum number four written in five. We have checked the number of rural municipalities, and most identified they either have no restriction, or if they do, get the most reasonable number of the maximum of five recreational vehicles are allowed. We suggest the amendment would ensure that for-profit areas of concern are not viable to operators, but also allow the ratepayers more room to be able to allow for relatives or friends to drop in and stay for a few weeks or a few days as they pass through the area with recreational vehicles, without having to ask for formal permission. For example, if a ratepayer were to store their personal recreational vehicle in their parcel and also have a member of their family's recreational vehicle, and then someone dropped by for a short visit on a Friday night, they would have, and have the recreational vehicle with them. They wanted to stay in it while they visited, it would be illegal. This would not be possible to request, it would not be possible to request approval from the municipal planning commission, as this is unexpected. Further, the actual cost of policing this restriction would be, could be extreme. To pass a bylaw as-is with this very significant change in it without making it clear it's more than twenty-five people who attended the open house, it's not simple. Therefore, as outlined in one person's comment on the surveys that were handed out, best government is the least government. Please be careful of too many rules and costs. We agree in respectfully's advice that council consider the requested amendment to this bylaw, increase the maximum number of recreational vehicles allowed to be stored or parked in a parcel to four or preferably five. Thank you in advance for your consideration of the request. Allen and Joanna Irwin. The next letter is from Heather O'Leary. Thank you for all that you, the councilors, and county administrators, are doing to update this bylaw. We are truly appreciative of all the efforts such a task entails. In response for the call for feedback, a few concerns is noted below. Boundary Creek should remain A1, as noted in Cliff Wallace's report by the county concerning the LDS youth camp in the Boundary Creek area, is of a significant environmental value that requires protecting. We may have missed it, but we did not find a section in the draft bylaw outlining the difference between the A1 and A2 categories, other than having to go to each section to see what was included. A leading sentence describing the overall difference would be helpful in examining proximity to a developed road. Please excuse this point, it was intended, it was indeed already there, and if so, please advise as to where in this document shall we review it. The public institutional use category should be removed from both the A1 and A2 designations and substitute the words with school or cemetery use, to be more appropriately outlined the uses you are trying to identify as described in our conversation and at the open house. We question whether or not this is even appropriate for an A2 district, as we are sure the need of heritage colonies for school or cemetery use in A2. The phrase "public and institutional" appears to be too general in nature, and therefore may allow for various interpretations and applications, thereby reducing council's ability to control uses within the category. School and cemetery use would provide council with a clearer understanding and interpretation of the category, and certainly provide the ratepayers of Boundary Creek some reassurance to the applications of bylaw in this regard. This changing wording may help to regain the sense of close community Boundary Creek had prior to the LDS youth camp application. We are also concerned that no reference on the posters at the open house was made of public and institutional use within the A1 and A2 district, and therefore many people were unaware of the inclusion of this broad definition, specifically in A2. We trust this was unintentional, nevertheless, it's a concern for the ratepayers of Boundary Creek, as it would be seen as little and critical information. Given the size of the bylaw document, we are concerned that many ratepayers are not reviewing the entire draft, find public institutional use to be included, and its loose definition, but rather rely on the brief synopsis of the A1 and A2 as outlined in the open house. Many of the bylaws refer to school and cemetery use to alleviate concerns in this regard. Again, we thank you all for the effort in this regard, and wish you all the best in amending this draft land use bylaw. Neil and Heather O'Leary.
Already the last few letters. This is from Nell Smith. Hello, Diana. I'm writing to let you know that I believe changing the land use bylaw wording from the general to the specific would be beneficial to council in guiding it in future land use developments applications. The general label of public and institutional use in A2, as outlined in the proposed land use bylaw, may have a loophole in that description to include a camp. Labeling it school and cemetery use is more specific, as long as school doesn't mean any educational use, as a recreational camp may be considered by some. Almost anything could be considered educational, so I think the word "school" may also need to be defined in the same students attending the school term. I hope you will find this helpful in your review of the land use bylaw. Thank you for your consideration. And this letter from Cindy Stinn. Dear council, I support your efforts and process to prepare and adopt the land use bylaw. With the number of people already in the county and the number wanting to own property and reside here, it is critical to have development standards that are understood by all and that protect the agricultural nature of the area. I agree with the land use districts and subdivision policies. I think alternative energy for personal use should be more freely allowed, but commercial use should be regulated. We need to protect areas of high environmental value, such as Boundary Creek area, which should be zoned the highest protection agricultural value, A1. I applaud council for undertaking this process, and hopefully we will not fall prey to the knee-jerk reactions that I am hearing around the county. This is not the wild west anymore, and we must operate as a civil society, not as individual libertarians. Okay, so this is, was received June 13th. It's attention Lloyd Curl-Rade, Mary Millwood C. A., of your serves regarding draft land use bylaw 653.2013. In accordance with the notice of public hearing regarding the proposed draft land use bylaw 653.2013, a copy of which is enclosed for your reference and for your purpose of receiving input from everyone who wishes to be heard, I am pleased on behalf of the three-hundred-and-fifty-four residents or ratepayers of Carson County listed on the enclosed forty-three sheets to submit here with their comments and writing. These comments and writing and the names of those three-hundred-and-fifty-four persons who signed the forty-three sheets attached here to are hereby submitted so as to form part of the record of the public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, June 19th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. Yours truly, Duncan Thompson. And this is the statement of objection to propose of Carson County Draft Land Use Bylaw 653.2013. We, the undersigned, being electors or ratepayers of Carson County, each express our individual objection to the enactment or passage of the draft land use bylaw 653.2013 for the reasons set forth below. A, it is objectively unnecessary, as the existing land use bylaw, 44398, with its several amendments, is satisfactory for the purposes required by the Municipal Government Act. B, it infringes upon our rights as individuals to use and develop our land as we may choose without it being necessary for the overall greater public interest. C, it unduly interferes with the economical or beneficial development and use of land in Carson County. D, it improperly duplicates or seeks to take over the existing jurisdiction and duties of provincial government departments and agencies. E, it places- E) It places far too much control, discretion, and decision-making in the hands of non-elected and unaccountable county officers and employees with no reasonable or effectual manner of redress for landowners. Counsel will now hear from people who have asked to speak to counsel. The following rules will apply. All those who wish to speak a step up to my performance is in front of me there. We ask that you keep your comments free and possible limited to five minutes. A point has been raised by a previous speaker who had asked us to focus on information that is new and relevant to this proposed land use bylaw. Please state your name, where you are from, which organization you represent for the minutes, and all statements should be directed to counsel. Also speak as clearly as possible slowly. And then after we go through these, we'll ask for anyone else who wants to speak. First, we'll go through those who have phoned in and asked to be on the agenda. So the first five people on the agenda. We said five minutes. Mike Parker, E. Burden, Chan Sal, Rebecca Prophet, and Eric Prophet. So, Mike Parker, if you can come to that mic right there, turn it on. Thank you for being first.
Alrighty, I'll be succinct. Alright, so just simply, I think some of these points have been raised in the letters already. The number of bylaws proposed are excessive and hence make it too restrictive. I ask that you table the proposed bylaws and provide an opportunity for members of the community to work together with you again to reshape the bylaws, to minimize them, and focus the bylaws on commonly agreed upon required issues. Thank you.
My name is Eva John and my points have been mentioned already tonight. I would just like to request that the bylaws be rescinded and that there be an opportunity for public input. These bylaws will affect us in every way, in every plan we have for the property that we own and the futures that we plan, and I think that you need our input before you finalize them.
Is Shana here?
Yeah.
Hi Shana. This is Sunny, Shana's husband.
Sorry. She's faint baby. Um, yeah, since I grew up in the Wild West, Vancouver, and moved here a few years ago and did a subdivision with some family and friends. And, you know, it was a decent experience, it was difficult. And at that time, I thought there was a lot of red tape to go through. And we did it, it cost a lot of money. Didn't make money on the project, wasn't part of it, but in reviewing the new bylaws, there's more red tape and more money. And for people who want to subdivide and to do things like we did and not make money, we're not developers, it makes it even harder to accomplish those things and to get things done. Another concern I have is that the bylaws as they are, for the proposed ones, basically they only really go into effect if someone complains about them. For example, if I put up the wrong fence in my yard and it doesn't have enough light coming through or something. And if no one complains, it's fine, you know, it's just on my conscience, which for some of us is okay. Others might have a hard time with that. And so, you know, for my neighbors right now, it'd probably be fine. I would propose that we give more freedom back to individuals who live in the county and believe that we're all trying to do the best we can to do good, to treat each other with loyalty and respect. And when that doesn't happen, to have a system in place to deal with those type of issues on an individual basis and allow us the freedoms to do what we want with our own land and to, to have the freedom to be respectful to each other and to make the decisions that we want to make. So, and also propose that the current bylaw proposal be tabled and we enter into peaceful dialogue together as a community and come to a conclusion what's best for all. Thank you.
Carson, the council, after reading the proposed bylaws for the third time, I have concluded that there is nothing extraordinarily difficult in the bylaws for us as citizens to abide with. I respectfully submit however, that the great majority of the points in the new bylaws violate our rights as a citizen of Carson Council, of Carson County, and a citizen of Carrickra. If I were to point out just a few specific things to council that we as landowners are concerned with, I would tell you that people who are interested in becoming self-sufficient are worried when they find out that in Schedule Five, Section one point one, solar collectors can be used to collect energy provided that they are mounted on a certain part of your house or a certain size, do not extend over the edge of your roof, and do not create a glare for your neighbor. In Schedule Five, Section two point one, one small windmill can be installed with a permit and an application fee provided that it does not exceed a certain height, does not have guide wires, is screened by vegetation, does not produce more than one kilowatt per hour, does not display a brand newer logo, and has painted a single, neutral, non-reflective, non-glossy color. I would tell the council that the people who moved to the county did so because they wanted to be in charge of their land and they are worried when they find out that in Schedule Four, Section nine point one of the proposed bylaws, the county would like to mandate where we store our garbage. In Section Four, in Schedule Four, Section twelve point five, the county would like to mandate how your fence must look, including how much light and air can pass through. In Schedule Four, Section Nine, how tall an outdoor light may be, how high your flagpole may be, and where in the yard it is situated. In Schedule Six, three point seven, that the materials used in a home addition, a new house, or an accessory building must be of a design, color, and finish which complement adjacent buildings and is a finish that is commonly used for exterior residences in your area. In Section, Schedule Two, seventeen point one, that your front yard must be landscaped to the satisfaction of the development officer. In Schedule Two, in Schedule Two, Section six point one, the bylaws mandate how high your house can be and how high your barns and accessory buildings can be, including that their roof lines are no more than two feet above or below your adjacent houses. I would explain to council that the people who want the right to choose what happens on their property are alarmed when they hear that in Schedule Two of the newly proposed bylaws, Section ten point one, you may not have any more than two recreational vehicles stored on your property and you may not allow anyone for any reason to permanently sleep in either of those two vehicles. In Schedule Two, Section sixteen point two, any broken down vehicle must not be stored on your property for more than fourteen days. Any pile of construction material that has passed the time, that your construction should be over, may not be stored on your property. And you must not store any objects determined by the bylaw officer as unsightly. According to Section, not Schedule Seven, Section two point seven, no more than two shipping containers may be stored on your property if you are in A1, if you're in a country residential. And if they are stored, they must not have any logos displayed, they must be used for agricultural purposes only, and must be regularly painted. In Schedule Three, Section Two, if you are on mainland, you may only build two tiny sheds under one hundred square feet. And if you are on a country residential, you may only build one. If you have more bikes, quads, construction materials, or lawn overs, you will have to pay a fee and apply to build any more storage sheds. Council may wonder why those seeking an economically viable business are surprised to learn that in the newly proposed bylaws, Section nineteen point four, if you want to rent out your house for less than twenty-eight days, you can't provided that you apply, pay a fee, have a license, get an inspection, and provide one paved parking spot for each bedroom you are renting out. Schedule Two, Section fifteen point four, no advertising shall be permitted on the property except one sign placed flat against a building or fence. And in Schedule Two, Section fifteen point two, if your dog has puppies and you like to sell them, that's okay. Just as long as you have applied to the county, paid a fee, have a license, comply with parking, signage, noise control, site, dust, waste management, and provide a list of days and hours of operation, and make sure the dog are supervised during breeding. No, I'm all set. So, as other person county citizens like me may agree, it is not that we're unable to comply with the proposed bylaws. It is simply that this bylaw unnecessarily takes away our freedoms to enjoy our land as we see fit. And although the bylaw outlines great ideas and probably helpful suggestions in planning my own step, mandating it creates a document that looks more like an HLA agreement in downtown Calgary than it does a set of bylaws for people who have one to one hundred acres of land living in the country. Thank you.
My name is Eric Prophet, I currently live in Carson County in Levitt. And I wish to share with you my concerns regarding this bylaw, all my thoughts. Earlier this evening, there was a letter read by Diane Horvath that said it would appear that this bylaw was prepared based upon sound principles. I'd like to share with you some of the principles that I think should be considered in regard to this. I'm sure there are a number of good ideas in this bylaw proposal. However, I'm not willing to swallow all of the sour for the sake of the sweet. There are, there are four things that I feel like we have to take into consideration, rights and responsibilities, and freedoms and security. In regard to freedoms and security, on June fourth, the Guardian newspaper published a report that said that the United States government was spying on its people through social media. And there was a huge outcry because the people of the United States feel like they're not willing to sacrifice their freedoms for the security they feel like they're getting there. And I feel like we've known this is not a new thing, it's been since the beginning, since, since the Magna Carta. The people talk about freedoms and security. War has been around for a long time and there's nothing new about neighbor fighting against neighbor. Seems to me that the proposed bylaw is to make sure things are orderly, to make sure that we have peace, that neighbor is not fighting against neighbor. But still, we have rights and responsibilities. It seems to me also that part of this is to advocate responsibility from choices that are made so that you cannot have legal recourse against the county. I propose that we say something in regards to what are the responsibilities that we as people of Carson County are willing to abide by and take upon our own heads and advocate, advocate the responsibility for that from the council and take upon them ourselves. I'd like to share with you some of the words that President Barack Obama said in regards to what was said during this freedoms and, and security discussion. He wanted to appease the people and make it seem like everything's okay. I'd like to kind of change a one or two words in this. And aside from those one or two words, this is an exact quote. "The way I view it, your job is to protect the people and to protect our way of life." Upon reviewing this proposed bylaw, I'd like to make a proposal of my own. Let's say bye to this bylaw. Let's get the people together to make a bylaw that serves us and you. Thank you.
The next five people, Melissa Stee, Peterson, Yom Peterson, Royce Jacobs, Duncan Thompson, Bruce Weaver. Be good, come in that order, please.
I may have got to change the order, I don't know if I closed first, but always thought that's better.
Which is a nice rare scene, he doesn't know what he's gonna say. I believe autonomy has been shown to be one of the number one determinants of healthy people. Those people who have the most control over their lives, the most autonomy and ability to do with their lives that they want to tend to be the happiest, the most fulfilled, the most obviously contributing community member. Which makes sense because if you're not dealing with crises at home and you're feeling like you have control of your life, you also have to feel like you have the ability to make a difference. And I feel like these bylaws, they look great. They are beautiful, like they have colored pictures and I can, I show my kids my, our house, Old Man River, it's done really good. But they take away my autonomy, they take away my control and my freedom in two ways. One is, I'm afraid, as much as I value Diad's input, as much as I value the, the offices and the other people that she talks to and the other communities that she's worked at and brought to the table for you guys to discuss, she clearly is not a member of Carson County. I think she has done a great job for what she was hired to do, but I feel like it would have been better served to get members of Carson County to be the instigator and to be the person that actually looked around and said, this is what we need. For things that work with other communities don't always work here. When I did a subdivision, I was required to do a storm drainage report. We had a hundred acres and five houses. The experts all said it was unnecessary, there was no reason why we needed this. This was a, a procedure for a community, for a big development, for a hamlet, for a town. But because it was suggested by an Old Man River person that this was a good bylaw, I mean, this was a good procedure, I had to do it and I had to pay thousands of dollars to get it down. There is other things like Sunny Sal had mentioned that we did our subdivision and we required to do a lot of things that weren't in this, that, that were less than is in this new proposed bylaws. And it cost me personally at least a hundred thousand dollars extra in debt. That makes me a hundred thousand dollars away from being a contributing community member because I have to pay that debt. It is worth it, I love Carson County, but it would have been so nice to not have to make my husband work that much harder and to have to... and to have to sprint that much to make ends meet. Um, something that is important, this important, should have included county members. It should have been so well-publicized and advertised. You should have been soliciting help and input from those county members. As you can see, a lot of people are interested. It's not that they're apathetic. Um, I did a role that you guys did all their, what Diane mentioned, all the right things. You did the newspaper, you did your handouts, you did your advertising, and were able to get 26 people, 26 people. I have lived here, I mean, I, I live here now, but I was not born and raised here. I don't know how many of you councillors were, have lived here longer than me, but I would wager, I would wager that you guys know more people than I know. I would wager that you guys have more connections than I have. I stay at home with my kids all day long. And yet, with a small handful of people, with less than a week, we were able to get over 100 peoples to an informal open house. Our, we are juggling so much in our lives. We have our home, we have our family, we have our health. When you throw extra things like bylaws, it makes it so hard to live and to be productive. It makes it so hard to be able to reach out and be community and be involved. And so I truly think that these bylaws need to be completely respectfully put in the trash and a new of county members get together with you guys, because you live in the county too, and work together to do something that will make your life easier and our life incredible. Thank you.
So hello, hello Carson County councillors. I appreciate the opportunity to have you address the proposed bylaws tonight. I was driving home from Napier today, so I had some time to put some thoughts together. So it wasn't that I had nothing to say, I just had to figure out which of all the thoughts I had to share. So I'd like to make three points tonight, um, one against the bylaws. One, I believe they govern to the lowest common denominator. Two, I don't believe they represent the people of the county. And three, I believe they actually increase the rating areas and opportunities for individual discretion in making decisions about land use in the county. There's an aspiring comic out here. If you want to stand up at the end, this is a great crowd. It's a great friend. First point, governing to the lowest common denominator. I'm a big sports fan. Uh, I think there's a game to have, I'm just gonna be near. Um, anyways, in baseball, sports teach patience. And here at a baseball fan, especially Chicago Cubs fan, you understand patience. It's been about over 100 years since the Cubs won the pennant. If you think back to 2003, the Cubs were the blast, they were doing quite well. They were in the National League Championship Series, they were playing the Fort LeBardons. They were up three games to two. In game six, they were in the eighth inning with a 3-1 lead, five outs away from winning. Now, it's famous what happened, the park run incident. If you remember, a fly ball was hit in foul territory. A young fellow, uh, reached up and caught the ball, um, removing the opportunity of the outfielder to catch the ball, record him out, and bring the game number closer to ending. What happened because of that was Marlins won on score eight runs in that inning. They won the game, won the series, and the Chicago Cubs was continued. That was a very unfortunate incident, here Chicago Cubs fan or baseball fan for that matter. Now, what the Cubs and baseball could have done, because of that unfortunate incident, in a desire to prevent it from ever happening again, if they need the help there, they could have banned people, young people, from being in baseball grounds to the stadium. It's a requirement for trying to reach out and catch a ball. They could have banned fans in the front row from leaning over the fence at a angle greater than 38 degrees to prevent them from trying to interfere in the game. They could have banned all 18-year-old boys from sitting on the front row with bleachers, unless of course they applied for a permit. Baseball, they do these laws that would have been bad for baseball, and they understood that. It seems that many of the bylaws and the proposed bylaws have been proposed out of incidents that have happened with one or five or 10 people, or incidents that may happen with a desire to prevent it. By doing that, you're governing to the lowest common denominator, applying to all 4,000-plus county residents, the standards necessary to govern the conflict of one or two. That's ungood governance and it's bad for county citizens. Second point, the bylaws don't represent the people of the county. I understand sometimes the need to refresh or update bylaws. The original bylaws are from 1998. Well, this has been mentioned quite thoroughly, these bylaws were drafted without any good from council. I believe you guys have worked on them for a year and a half or so. And I think many of the points that have been raised, um, you might be able to repeat them with your knowledge and the details of the bylaws. If you look around at the audience tonight, the only people with the terrible knowledge have gray circles around their eyes because they had to sacrifice steam or other resources to attempt to catch up to what we've been able to do. Third, third point, I believe these bylaws increase the gray areas and opportunities for individual discretion in making decisions. In discussing why do we need these bylaws, one of the main reasons I heard was, "Well, there's too much gray area in the old bylaws. There's too much, um, things that aren't clarified or made specific." These new bylaws do a better job of articulating details that'll help us make consistent decisions for everybody. But if you read the proposed bylaws, as Rebecca described for us, their scope has been quite expanded. And they've become quite intrusive. And if you question why this is, the response generally seems to be in the spirit of, "Well, it's not my job to police landscaping, but the bylaws exist to give us the authority to do something at this point." Without having the bylaws, we wouldn't be able to do anything. But if you consider that response carefully, what it means is that the application of these new bylaws depends on individual discretion and decisions. So it's actually going to increase in gray area and opportunity for individuals to decide to, and why the bylaws should be applied. That's an indicator of a poor bylaw. What I propose is to rescind these bylaws and start the process over. I'd like the idea of having a citizens committee to guide what should be in the bylaw and what shouldn't be in the bylaw. I'd also suggest that the new bylaws be a maximum of 50 pages long. Five zero, fifty. It's five fifty, because I think it would force us to dramatically rethink what belongs in the bylaw, what their purposes, what should be included and excluded in them. I think you're smart, I think you're smart. We'll be together and continue this up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bryce Jacobs. I live in Norton View. I've lived in Carson County most of my adult life, most of my life. Mr. Chairman, I think we've reached the point of the meeting where it's difficult to say something new. So in the interest of time, I'm going to be very brief and try not to repeat many of the excellent points that have been made already. First of all, this audience probably knows that if they don't, I did serve on this council as a member of the Carson County for 18 years. I was on the council when the present bylaw was developed. A bylaw which I think has served us pretty well. But I'd like to just share one brief experience which perhaps illustrates much, many of the points that have been made tonight. When I was elected to council in 18, in 1983, I'm not quite that old. I'm getting there, but I'm not quite. 1983, I was pressured by some citizens that were concerned about the rules and regulations that were being imposed on the citizens around Waterton Park by the Old Man River Planning Agency. They had a buffer zone around the park of 15 miles. And in that buffer zone, there could be no development, no subdivisions, or anything like that. And so I and my colleagues and others went to work on the provincial government and we did manage to get that changed so that planning land use bylaws was placed in the hands of the county council where it should be, not in the Old Man River Planning Agency, not in bureaucrats, but in your hands. So, here, here's the point, Mr. Chairman. I'm amazed at the development that has occurred in that buffer zone in the last 20 years. There are many houses, many developments that have occurred which have been of great benefit to the people who live there. We have fathers who've been able to get five-acre subdivisions for their sons so their sons could build a house, get a mortgage and build a house. I could tell you lots of stories about that, but I won't. So, property rights and having freedom of the people enhance the economy. It's important. So, when I attended the open house a month or so ago and listened to some of you and Diane talk, my first impression was, well, everything they're telling me goes against my basic philosophy of property rights. Which is that property rights are in, in illogical rights. It is an in, in illogical right, a God-given right, and people should be able to do with their property as much as possible. I believe that's an important right, and I think that you as councillors should have responsibility, should take the responsibility to preserve those rights as much as possible. Now, I understand that sometimes we have to protect people from other people's things they want to do. For example, I don't think people should be able to build a hog barn adjacent to my house or on the west side of my house. So, we need some permitted uses and we need some discretionary uses. But if conclusion is determined, we have to alert the council to take command of this situation and, and take it upon yourselves to listen to what you've heard tonight. Let's, let's start over again. If we need a new bylaw, let's do it from the people, from the ground up, not from the top down.
Mr. Chairman, councillors, uh, my name is Duncan Thompson. I, uh, my ancestral roots in this area go back to 1887 in the town of Carson to 1899 in the town of McGrath, and to 1902 in the Hammondus Spring Cooley where I live. I had the wonderful privilege of serving with Bryce Jacobs on county council for a part of a term in 98, 99, and was one of the people that put my hand up to the first land use bylaw, thereby satisfying the requirements of the Municipal Government Act that was brought in in 1995. What I wish to emphasize tonight to you is, uh, some legislation, uh, some of which you may be familiar with, some of which you may not. I took the liberty of copying these, uh, particular provisions for the audience so that they'll understand just what the law is about and how it applies. Firstly, I want to touch on the Alberta Bill Rights. This was, uh, first brought in in 1972, a year after Peter Lockheed was elected, uh, premier and 10 years before the Charter of Rights and Freedoms was enacted in federal parliament. The preamble says, "Whereas the free and democratic society existing in Alberta is founded on principles that acknowledge the supremacy of God and on principles fostered by tradition, that honor and respect, honor and respect human rights and fundamental freedoms and the dignity and worth of the human person." In Section 1A, it states, "It is hereby recognized and declared that in Alberta there exist, without discrimination by reason of race, national origin, color, religion, or sex, the following human rights and fundamental freedoms namely: the right of the individual to liberty, security of the person, and enjoyment of property and the right not to be deprived thereof except by due process of law." Now, obviously, in Canada, we have two constitutionally recognized levels of government, the federal and provincial. Municipal governments are not recognized in the Constitution but are a creature, a child of the provincial legislature. And as such, they can, uh, only act in accordance with the directions and latitude accorded them by the, the province. And one of the most important things, uh, that gives credence to what a municipality does in the planning area is found in Section 617. And why I emphasize this, uh, gentlemen, is that if you do not comply with the, uh, Municipal Government Act, then you're acting outside the law. And as a result, that is not due process and that thereby you're infringing the fundamental freedom of enjoying our property. The purpose of this part, and the regulation and bylaws under this part, is to provide means whereby plans and related matters may be prepared and adopted, A, to achieve the orderly, economic, economical, and beneficial development use of land and patterns of human settlement, and to maintain and improve the quality of the physical environment within which patterns of human settlement are situated in Alberta. And I've chosen to underline or highlight, without infringing on the rights of individuals for any public purpose. You are limited and restricted in what you can do. You do not have a blank check to do whatever you feel you might to want to. The only latitude in that is except to the extent that it is necessary, necessary for the overall greater public interest. And I, looking at this bylaw, and I'm, I'm comfortable that as you, uh, deliberated on its provisions, that none of you would have taken into account whether or not it was necessary. Might be nice, but isn't necessary. Because once you do not have an objective, uh, uh, reason for determining it's, uh, in the overall public interest, then you're operating outside the law. The other thing that's important is the emphasis on the economical. And, uh, we have, I know an agenda, but ORS, that's their job, to deal with planning matters, and they don't seem to worry too much about economic viability. Section 3 requires, the Municipal Government Act requires that the purpose of a municipality are to develop and maintain safe and viable communities. Flowers in the garden are not as important as bread on the table. And you need to, you not only need to, but you're mandated by the legislation to keep that in mind as you enact rules, regulations, and the posed conditions and restrictions. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to pay attention to your five-minute rule. And I have the fundamental right to freedom of speech. I'm limited by some arbitrary time limit. I understood that the purpose for your hearing tonight was to receive input from the public. And unfortunately, there's more than five minutes worth of input that I must give to you. So, in regard to, uh, our Regional Advisory Council, uh, report that the provincial government had mandated for our South Saskatchewan River Basin, ORS decided to comment on that report, and it's on their website. But here's their, their comment, because one of the main, uh, goals was healthy, a healthy economy. And ORS says, conversely, several potential issues may be of concern to municipality. The advice has an overriding emphasis on economic development. It's limited in its address of municipal planning and development issues. So obviously, ORS believes that the economy isn't as important as what they would like to have planned for us. I also want to emphasize that, uh, unfortunately, this, uh, meeting is not properly constituted under the Municipal Government Act. Section 692 outlines for a planning bylaw, the hearing that, uh, has to be, uh, put together. Subsection 4 says, "In the case of an amendment to a land use bylaw to change the district designation of a parcel of land, the municipality must, in addition to the requirements in subsection 1," and then it goes to ABC. The whole purpose of what you're doing is to change virtually every land use designation in this, uh, municipality. You must give written notice containing the information described in clause 8 and in subsection 606 sub 6 to the assessed owner of that parcel at the name and address shown on the assessment all of the municipality. That was not done. And give, give a written notice containing the information describing clause 8 and in subsection 6 of 606 to each owner of adjacent land at the name and address. at the name and address shown for each owner on the set of McGraw municipality. That was not done. Section 606/6 stipulates in subsection C, "A notice must contain, in the case of a bylaw or resolution, an outline of the procedure to be followed by anyone wishing to file a petition in respect of it." Your notice clearly says that no questions are to be asked by the public at this meeting, but it fails to include the provisions for anyone wishing to file a petition. And as a result, what this meeting, because it doesn't comply with those mandatory responsibilities on the part of council or its administration, cannot be seen as a public hearing within the meaning of the act. The other thing that I want to emphasize is the suggestion that there's an expiry date on a bylaw, on the land use bylaw in particular. Emphasis has been made that this current one was done in 1998. Also, there's been an emphasis that land use policies must be looked at when one is enacting or amending a bylaw. The land use policies that are on the municipal affairs website were put in place in 1996, two years prior to our land use bylaw coming into effect. And provinces seem fit to leave them the way they are. So, I submit that there is no such thing as an expiry date on a bylaw, especially if, as you've emphasized, it's been amended a number of times to reflect the changes that are needed. I must say that I was greatly disappointed when Mr. Burrell only read the main body of my letter. There were 354 signatures on those 43 sheets. And he chose not to read into the record who had signed that statement of objection. I find that inappropriate. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to take the time to read the names of the people who did... Jerry Aldridge, Monica Bunton, Dennis Edwards, Yvonne Summerfeld, BJ Gorm, Jamie Roberts, Perry Roberts, Brian Shaw, Anne Shaw, Naomi Peterson, Shayna Sala, Alexandra Sala, Rebecca Proffitt, Eric Proffitt, Jared Van Howard, Rachel Van Howard, Heather Burton, Jared Hebert, Sherry Hebert, Darren Baker, Eric Stewart, Brad Sealy, Leanne Cook, Corey Joe Frobley, Joe Cook, Caitlin Cook, Brett Nish, Clayton Kennard, Randy Kennard, Linda Mook, Didier Arius, Christine Arius, Kathy Richards, Bill Richards, Justin Henninger, Kazel Wynder, Mike McCarthy, Wayne Jensen, Debbie Jensen, JR Thompson, Nicole Thompson, Barbara Thompson, Duncan Thompson, Amanda Nish, Kaylee Viola, Vicky Pausland, Becky Stewart, Floyd Stewart, Tulie Ann Summerfeld, Alan Summerfeld, Hannah Lee Griffiths, Karen Wiley, Alan Wiley, Erin Mook, Marsha Ripley, Leah Ripley, Joe Ripley, Melody Van Howard, Shadow Van Howard, Gib Shaffer, Trina Stewart, Joanne Baker, Nicholas McLaren, Kevin Soper, Leslie Soper, Kathy Soper, Jean Pausland, Megan Card, Wes Card, Cola Hartley, Bronk, Pilling, John Barry, Bart Anderson, Susan Anderson, Royce Levitt, Craig Carnell, Eric Proffitt, Ken Mackin, Josh Caldwell, Mitch Carter, Toby Waldner, David Waldner, Michael Waldner, Kathy Waldner, Rebecca Waldner, David Waldner, Andy Waldner, Elizabeth Waldner, Josh Waldner, Mary J. Waldner, Sarah Waldner, Paul Waldner, Jake Waldner, Sarah Waldner, Barbara Waldner, Katie Waldner, Chris Waldner, Mary Ann Waldner, Martin Waldner, Sam Waldner, Mary S. Waldner, Martha S. Waldner, Martha J. Waldner, Joe Waldner, Joe... George Waldner, Mike Waldner, George Waldner, Henry Waldner, Rachel Waldner, Mary Ann Waldner, Rita Waldner, Henry Waldner, Andy Waldner, Sam Waldner, Ben Waldner, Mary Waldner, David Waldner, Ann Waldner, Susan Waldner, Linda Waldner, David V. Waldner, Suzy Waldner, Rebecca Waldner, Dora Waldner, Andy Waldner, Sarah Ann Waldner, Kathy Waldner, Eli Waldner, Doug Sheen, Steve Quinton, Ken Wild, Guy Oldley, Frank R. Smith, Mike Beavens, Richard Wild, Darrell Beavens, Stephen Beavens, Bob Wilson, Legrand Beavens, Merrill Cook, Russell Viola, Jacqueline Avery, Tom Avery, Lance Russell, Lenart Deuce, Ernie Olson, Kevin Quinton, Tom Nish, Colton Avery, Dennis Allred, Mark Heggie, Ryan Allred, Justin Heggie, Tracy Russell, Corinne Allred, Jesse Hall, Charlie Carey, Randy Pausland, April Nish, John Cooper, Robert Cooper, Donna Cooper, Megan Pearson, Rob Pearson, Teresa Steed, Betty Wiley, Gerald Riley, Harlan Smith, Cynthia Smith, Judy Skipworth, Brian Skipworth, Sheldon Hausman, Lori Raj, right... Dios Vois, Darlene Winchester, Kyle Winchester, Kareem Bennett, Lloy Bennett, Frank Waldner, Sam Waldner, Darius Waldner, Leah Waldner, Andrew Waldner, Esther Waldner, Philip Waldner, Debbie Waldner, Rachel Waldner, Dave Waldner, Dora Waldner, Annie Waldner, Judy Waldner, Ben Waldner, Esther Waldner, Judy Waldner, Linda Waldner, David Waldner, David... Doug Ann Waldner, Marion Dee Waldner, Jonathan Waldner, Marion Waldner, Sarah Waldner, George Waldner, Eli Waldner, Esther Waldner, Eli Waldner, Esther Waldner, Catherine Waldner, Levi Waldner, Ben Waldner, Mark Waldner, Rosa Waldner, Benny Waldner, Mary Ann Waldner, Lydia Waldner, Merlin Beavens, Jordan Beavens, Marvin Beavens, Mary Beavens, Michael Shipley, Jeremy Beavens, Tasha Beavens, Lonnie Shipley, Tanya Nelson, Colton Farms, sung by Tanya Nelson, Gordon Levitt, Kami Hansen, Kami Hansen, sorry. Kathy, I'm sorry, Charles Hurst, I think, Mark Charles Hurst, Deborah J. Haslam, Rachel Waldner, Jake Waldner, Matt Waldner, Jerry Waldner, Daniel Waldner, Matilda Waldner, Joe Waldner, Chris Waldner, Bertha Waldner, Sarah Waldner, Christopher Waldner, Walter Waldner, Eli Waldner, Esther Waldner, Barbara Waldner, Ann Waldner, Susan Waldner, Esther May Waldner, Martin J. Waldner, Kim Prince, Jeffrey Prince, Colleen Ford, Walter Ford, Gary Nish, Mary Moxley, Tina Hausman, Olivia Ranger, Ben Nish, Jody Nish, John Post. Gordon Moxley, Wendy Nish, Valerie Prince, Cody Prince, Carol Stewart, Karen Toon, Cheryl Romnall, Carl Romnall, Sheila Hall, Carol Barr, Laura Levitt, Barbara Baird, Gary Wahlberger, Shelley Wahlberger, Annie Van Ormen, Mick Hallick, Misty Hallick, Robbie Van Ormen, Kathy Nelson, Donald Nelson, Rick West, Vanessa Leishman. That's a cross-section of your council. Very deep cross-section of your council that are all involved for the reasons stated on this sheet as to what you're doing. Mr. Chairman, I urge you with all my heart to repeal this bylaw and for the other reasons that I support here. Look to the people. Think about, is it necessary? Think about it, is it economically viable? We're not the city of Calgary. We're Carstoun County with 4,167 people in 750,000 acres. Thank you very much.
Counselor, my name is Bruce Bieber. I live up in the Bounder Creek. Some of you know me, some of you have heard of me, and to some of you, I'm just another pretty base in the crowd. Everybody wants to maintain their rights, their rights of freedom, rights of security, rights of property. But along with those rights comes responsibility. And one of the reasons we have government, both at all levels, including municipal, is to ensure that everybody assumes a certain amount of responsibility. You can't say, "This guy can do this." And, okay, this guy can't. I have to level out responsibility. And this bylaw you're proposing in many ways does that. There's a lot of things that it brings that concern me, that I'm concerned about, that I have opinions about. Now, I would suggest respectfully that if you take your proposal, you go to the old one, go to the new one, and you merge them and say, "This is what we've had. This is what we're proposing." You do it line by line, so it's easier to see what's going on. Because it's difficult to sit through them 300 pages. Some of the items of responsibility that I'm concerned with is we have changes in the science. We have changes in shipping containers, minor changes. Prohibited or restricted objects in yards, home occupations, accessory buildings, drilling units per parcel. How many people can live in a bedroom? Well, most. But these are items that concern us all. Most of us anyway. One of the reasons that we bring you to look after stuff is, one, you have more information at your fingers than we do. I never heard anything about this pipeline. I haven't heard the word "pipeline" at all until I came here tonight. But you guys certainly draw on control of some of the development requirements. The old man planning commission, some years ago, sat down and said, "These are... This is what's important to us and this is what's important to our people." And from that plan, we are able to decide what we're going to do five years from now, or what we're going to do 10 years from now, to have people come in. Like, I was born and raised here. To have people come... I was born and raised here. To have people come in and say, "Okay, I bought this section of scrub brush that won't support a cow, so nobody can raise a cow. So, let's split it up and we'll put on 300 houses." In the old 98 plan, there's a couple of pages on trailers, mobile homes, what they have to have. Well, those requirements have changed over the years. The demands of the people have changed over the years. Now, one of the things that's going on here, somebody called fire. And everybody's running around saying, "Do we have a fire extinguisher?" I'd say, "Well, so far, we do. We've got lots of people here." My best suggestion again here is, take the old, take the new. Draw up the old one, draw up the new ones, show where the changes are, what the changes are. Give it back to the people. Okay, I'll go away now.
Thanks, Bruce, and thanks to all those who've already spoken. Next slide, Blair Orr, Jim Bestor, Colleen Ford, Mark Charlesworth, Bill Peterson, in that order, please.
My name is Blair Orr. And I'm going to talk about a bylaw that will preserve the road right of way. I read this bylaw that you guys wrote up. I wrote five different letters to you as a council individually on April the 2nd, and to which I have no response still. The law requires, the right of freedom of information requires that you let me know within 30 days. Today, I have no response from you. As you all know, that according to these bylaws and the right of freedom of access to property, which was just read here by our Alberta Bill Rights, you know that I'm trying to be stopped from getting to my property. Okay? You know that I'm suing you and our neighbors over all this. Okay? I know that you vote, you have voted to see that I get into the court system. Maybe some of you have voted for me, but as an individual and as a group, you voted against me, and that's why we're in court over these bylaws and over access and over our property rights. If God himself came down here and said that this bylaw that you guys are trying to pass there was inspired by him, I wouldn't trust any of you to implement it on an individual basis or as a group. That's it. End of it.
Oh, it's a hard answer, Paul. Hi, my brother, the document. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jim Bestor. I and my wife Carolyn are fourth-generation descendants of pioneers that settled the land between the valley and waterfront rivers, both in and surrounded in communities of Glenwood and Hillsborough. We currently live just north of the Great Canadian Bar Dance. I've got ancestors in both those graveyards, and I suspect they're rolling over right about now when they go through some of this. I believe passing the bylaw 653 as currently drafted infringes upon my property rights. Now, please don't misunderstand me or misinterpret me. I'm not a redneck. I understand there's a need for good guidelines, standards, things like this, but they need to fit the people. You need to take a look around at what we've got in our community now. And like somebody said, is that viable? Is it doable? With my limited time, I see, I get the clock, other people didn't necessarily, but... You also need to maybe consider, since you're not in conformance, that $10,000 fine a year in jail that might impact you. With my limited time, I'd like to bring forward a couple of issues that will affect me personally in the land use district I live in, namely Agricultural General or AG2. Section 5.3, "No par of any dugout, regardless of size, shall be located within 100 feet of the right-of-way of a public road." This is far too excessive and would make a vast majority of the existing dugouts noncompliant, depending, I know you can grandfather things, depending on the topography of the land. Dugouts are often located at the lowest elevation of sloping land to collect water and to get his property. In section 7 of Development Standards, post-encabled barricades are required if a 100-foot setback is waived. If this is a safety issue, these barriers are far too expensive and excessive, given our area is already littered with man-made and natural ponds and major irrigation districts that are open and parallel to our roads. So, if you guys want to go and do all that, maybe we'll consider doing that as well. Minimum setbacks from irrigation infrastructure. This section should be deleted in its entirety. Required setbacks from irrigation ditches and pipelines are a negotiated agreement between the landlord and the irrigation district. In my case, UID has my written permission to run approximately 1 km of pipeline across my field. We already have an agreed-upon 20-meter right-of-way for construction maintenance purposes. The width of a rural road has about the width of a... Well, it is, the width of a rural road is 20 meters. I've got a 2-foot pipeline going through here. For the county, the decade adding additional 30% to the 63 meters on each side to this land base, in my mind, is unconstitutional. I do have some photos and packages there. They press got some, I had some for them as well. Section 9.3, setbacks for fences with less than 85% of open surface areas. There are many applications for fences with less than a... There are many applications for fences with less than an opening at 85%, should be acceptable. I've got some photographs here about the three I've cooked in the community. I would defy any politician of all those individuals and tell them that you're going to have to rip that down, because there is not in compliance, because there are only 65% open space. And they're beautiful. Now, the setback stated on privately-held land from naturally occurring water bodies, irrigation pipelines, water reservoirs is again, again, in my mind, unconstitutional and infringe upon landowners' rights and good management practices. Lots of places, guys, you've got to get your cattle out of water, and you don't, you know, you need these fences and things. This again would put many existing property owners in position noncompliance, and I believe create a lot of unnecessary conflict. It is noticed in section 9.4 that in rural areas along local roads, half the setback distance is required for a hedge or shelter fence, or 50 feet, than for a fence, which needs 100 feet. What's the practical difference between a shelter tree, shelter line, and hedges over a fence a guy wants to put on his own property? Objects prohibited or restricted in yards. Now, I understand there are a few, usually very few, people that do not take pride in their community, and some that just don't have the means to beautify or time to beautify their yards. But, 10.1, the state, no person shall go too far, no person shall goes too far, given the state of penalties of $10,000 a year in jail. This statement leaves too much for interpretation by an unreasonable bylaw officer or a neighbor. Beauties in the eye of the holder. I like the looks of an old farm truck abandoned yard as much as an old wooden wagon. It keeps me reminded of my pioneer history and the struggles our forefathers went through to give us the legacy we have. 10.2, the restriction, not more than two recreational vehicles stored or parked in a parcel is unreasonable in the county. Who is going to go around and do the counting and enforce this provision? You don't have enough people to go through all the backyards and garage properties. If we have a family reunion on my property, which involves more than two family units bringing their trailers and other recreational vehicles to park or even store in the off-season, does this mean I need to pay for a special permit? If a person wants to live or sleep in a recreational vehicle on their own land, which often can be more livable than a small house or cabin, who are we to dictate? All my grandparents lived in a graveyard. All my grandparents lived in granaries before they built a permanent house. You progress as you can afford to, and that's why I say they'll probably be rolling over. Taylor's Homes in, there's a house in all of Hillspring, it's put together out of two grains, beautified now, made something good out of it, but folks, a lot of you sitting here, they know what your parents went through, and a lot of young families, I have a lot of young families, kids, non-bear families, it's tough for them. In summary, there are a number of other areas in the bylaw which I feel need to be revisited to ensure we are not force-fitting our rural life into an idealized urban environment. If not, I sense that once the silent majority is faced with a noncompliance issue, it will create unnecessary conflict. Thank you.
I'm Phil Mead, my line is Duncan Thompson. Everything that I had is being said, I think, so thank you.
Mark Charlesworth then, is he here?
Okay, my name's Mark Charlesworth, I'm from Wellington, and I'm opposed to this bylaw, especially to Schedule 2H1, which mostly affects me. This thing about recreational vehicles, I own three of my own, and I can only park one? Because that's crazy. Like, they're parked in the back, straight, a little misty. I don't know who it follows, but... I've got two and a half acres, if I can have a couple friends park theirs over the winter. There's something wrong with this area. And the next thing, I guess, is landscaping your yard. Who's to decide what's beautiful? I mean, I just don't get it. And also, I'd like to know what changed in nine months. You just accepted a building that was 25 feet high, and now you're saying it's only 16 feet. So I guess I'm pretty much done. I'd like to thank Duncan for inviting all these people.
Thank you, Bill Peterson, is he here?
Uh, I'm, yeah, enough's been said.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, Susan Smith, Maureen Blackmore, Cassidy Holt, Brett Nish, Dave Nelson, if they would like to say more.
Susan Smith, I live near Mountain View. My first concern was, again, with the notice of hearing, because it specifically stated in there that it was pursuant to section 230, and 230 says, 4A says, that in public hearing, council must hear any person, et cetera, who claimed to be affected by the proposed bylaw. And yet, the notice specifically stated that specific questions regarding how the bylaw will affect you will not be answered. And I know that's been verbally, in a sense, rescinded here, but it's left the impression, I think, with many people in the county, that their rights and safeguards under redesignation rules would be totally disregarded in this massive rezoning. Because when individual parcels are redesignated, there are requirements for a landowner, for adjacent landowners to be notified, and it appears from here that people will not have the hearing that would be required under individual zoning. The second thing that I would like to address would be the AG1. It is designated that way, I understand, because it's deemed to have no access, and this was done administratively without apparently any inquiry into whether there were legally registered easements upon well-developed roads. They might not be up to county standards, but there are easements in the county between landowners that give access. And yet, it has to be within a half-mile, apparently, of a county standard road to be deemed to have access. And when you look at the permitted uses of this, and many, many sections and parcels of land in the county have been rezoned or proposed rezoned into AG1, you will notice that there is no residence as a permitted use in AG1, but there is a home occupation business permitted use, which is somewhat confusing, because a home occupation must be secondary to a residential use. So there's a, I don't know if that was intentional, but how can you have a home occupation as a permitted use when there is no permitted use for a residence? It has to be secondary. And a real concern also in here is, you read this through, on first glance, it looks like AG1 has some permitted uses, but when you go back to section 18.2, because it's deemed not to have access, all uses become discretionary. So AG1 has no permitted uses whatsoever under section 18.2. And that means that when anyone wants to do anything, apparently, they have to, it's discretionary, it has to go before, there has to be an application for development for anything to be done. And I know that Schedule 3 says that there are developments not requiring a development permit, but how can you do a development when all of your permitted uses have now become discretionary? There's a conflict here in AG1 that is very, very confusing, that a landowner doesn't know what, that everything he does on an AG1 must go under discretionary and therefore require an application, a fee, a hearing, a notice to adjacent landowners for anything. And that comes out of section 18.2, which says, "All uses become discretionary when there is no legal, when there is no access," and all parcels in AG1 are deemed not to have access. And I just want to add one final thing, that we should be careful when we attempt to overlay rules and regulations that might be appropriate for high-density areas onto low-density zones, and that's my conclusion.
Could you meet council? I had just, um, an opportunity to meet Cassidy Holt on behalf of Maureen Blackmore. Edna, I had the opportunity to meet with Cartston County in October 2011, and I'll talk to Duncan about that afterwards, on the illegal changing of the Edna bylaws. And I'd just like to make a statement that I did say at that time, last time I checked, this was Canada, not Russia or Cuba, but I was told that council could do whatever they wanted. I think maybe we can't, because the people don't really want all council work, so that's all we have to say. I'll talk to Duncan about the illegal changing of the Edna bylaws in 2011.
And Brett Nish? Here he comes, then Dave Nelson right after, right after that Jeff Beckel.
My name's Brett Nish, taxpayer in Carson County, representing Willa Gardens tonight. I was one of the few 25 people, less than half of 1%, that attended a public information meeting, and I was told at that meeting, and I said, "How does this affect our property? Our subdivision that we've been working on for six years, 80 grand into it, how does this affect us?" "No change at all," is what I was told. "You're still group country residential." Two days later, get home and realize that I'm group country residential one, which is nothing of what I applied for. I fit better into three, and as far as that goes, I believe that I have the right to be asked what I want to be zoned at. I want to stay the same as I am right now. I do not want to be changed. To me, this whole process has been very upsetting. I have here a copy of the land use policies printed by the government of Alberta, and I just want to read a few sections from that. Municipalities are expected to take steps to inform both interested and potentially affected parties in municipal planning activities, and to provide appropriate opportunities and sufficient information to allow meaningful participation, meaningful participation in the planning processes by residents, landowners, community groups, interest groups, municipal service providers, and other stakeholders. It's great news to the service providers, to other municipalities, but not to us as Under section 3 of planning cooperation...
...what do they object? The other stakeholders, what's Prince Creek going to do? Nothing. What's Afro-Gaz going to do? Nothing, they're going to rubber stamp it.
Okay, he's at the floor right now, if you want to say something, as soon as we get through these three people, we'll ask whether any people want to say something.
Under 3.0, planning cooperation. To foster cooperation and coordination between neighboring municipalities and between municipalities and provincial departments and other jurisdictions in addressing planning issues and implementing plans and strategy, number 2 says, "In particular, adjoining municipalities are encouraged to cooperate in the planning of future land uses in the vicinity of their adjoining municipalities or boundary-strange areas, respecting the interests of both municipalities and in a manner which does not inhibit or, uh, excuse me, inhibit or preclude appropriate long-term use nor unduly interfere with the continuation of existing uses. Adjoining municipalities are encouraged to jointly prepare and adopt intermunicipal development plans for critical fringe areas. These plans may involve lands which are both of the adjoining municipalities." In your current bylaw and in this proposal, there is no reference to an intermunicipal agreement. And I had the disdain of going through that process, having an application ongoing, and my rights being snatched from me by this council. I did not have any recourse, since nothing was addressed in your bylaws, I have absolutely no say. I had to sit there and take it. I guess I'm saying I need your protection. With nothing being, with nothing being said or written in the bylaw, you do whatever you want, and I'm sorry, this is politics. You got your water, congratulations, now everyone's paying for it. A few other points I'd like to make, is I am personally involved with some agriculture activities, getting different things in the county, and I for one am not in favor of the site permit or whatever it is you have to go through. I do not want other people influencing my agricultural decisions and having any say At the public information, I did try to be informed, I did ask two counselors for a copy of the land use bylaw. I tried to look at every theme that you had in the room, and I wanted to know what was different, and I wanted to be educated on what was presented there. And there's definitely some things that were pushed that have come in new, and yes, they may need to be addressed, wind power, different things like that. I'm not saying that we don't need change, but I would have thought that the shock and awe of a document this size, I thought we would have learned from the past that that is not a good fit for anyone in southern Alberta. We went through this process in McGrath, and huge document, huge change, huge proposal, no one wanted it. We want to be able to understand your changes, we want to have time to study your changes. I realize that you guys are working at this continually, I don't think this is a one-day theme, you know, I've heard different things, oh, they just started on this year. I believe that you do work on it all the time, but I don't think that we are being informed at all on what you are doing. The main question that people are giving me is, "What do I do now if I do not like this bylaw?" Well, what I'm doing is tomorrow morning, I'm calling municipal affairs, and I'm telling them that the rules that Duncan handed on the path that everyone, that those rules were not followed, and that I do not have faith or trust in my current council. I've already conveyed, conveyed to Mr. Millward that I do not want anyone on my land, I do not want any county employees, I do not want county counselors, I do not want anyone coming on. You're not welcome, I'm sorry, I do not trust you. Thank you.
A lot of what I was going to say tonight's already been said, so I'm going to cut my, cut my talk down here a little bit. Looking at all this bylaw, there's so much of it, I haven't had time to even know in full detail what it is we're putting through, there's just too much. I'd have to, like I said before, I'd have to take a week off work to go through it all. I'm too busy, I've got work to do. It stands now, I cannot support the bylaw, because it looks to me that whether you are in favor of parts of this bylaw or not, you are negatively affected by increasing government intrusion. It's coming... It stands now, I cannot support the bylaw, because it looks to me that whether you are in favor of parts of this bylaw or not, you are negatively affected by increasing government intrusion. It's come to my attention that Lloyd Curl and Dennis Edwards voted to rescind and repeal this bylaw on moral grounds, but the county refused. I'm also told that this bylaw, in parts of it, may be in contravention to the Alberta Bill of Rights, and in looking through some of that material tonight, I agree with that statement. "It doesn't matter to me how long and hard the county has worked on this bylaw. If it is not right for the county, then the issue of fixing or rescinding it must be addressed." We all work hard too, and it's just kind of the way it goes. "It's so monstrous that I do not believe many of the residents who are aware of this document have even had time to find out exactly what it contains. If county residents are not in favor of it, then it must be either rescinded or revised to the point that the intrusive nature of it is done away with. In the meantime, if Cartston County is so sure of the reported value of this proposed legislation, they should have no problem holding more meetings and educating the public as to what is contained within it." And I think the people here have spoken tonight. I for one, I'm not a big fan of somebody telling me my every step, what time I need to do this, and when, and why. I agree that we do need laws and boundaries within society, but I also agree that when the government starts to get too controlling on these matters, it's time for the people to stand up and put them back in their place. And I hope this meeting here tonight, council will listen to what the people have said and take it into consideration. It is the residents of this county who are your boss. So I hope you take it seriously.
Well, Jeff, I mean, Joey Ripley wasn't able to be here because he, well, Marcia Ripley, did you want to take his place, or are you happy? Okay, right after this person. Thank you.
So Jeff Beckel, far north south of town. I was also like Brad, one of the 24 or so guys that did come to the meeting. And I wish that I knew even more than I do, been trying to understand some of what I've heard, talked about around the community. I found that some of it, I think, was false, and some of it is honest concerns. I certainly support the idea of, and I believe the council does too, of listening to some of these specific concerns, exploring ways of wording might be changed to address some of those concerns. I also think it's worth noting that many of the things that are, the bylaws attempting to address, need to be addressed. That they're, the old bylaw has let us down in the past. I've been at meetings with many people here where we thought that the bylaw would preclude certain things, and yet it seemed to fail to, and resulted in conflict in communities. Tradition was mentioned earlier, and I'm not sure if tradition's important, then I think it's important. And sometimes when the community is looking into its traditional values, and yet a new land use seems to be able to come in, and ignoring that traditional use, I think bylaw fails. And so I think the old bylaw has failed us, and there is a need for a rework. I do support the idea of giving people time to understand this, to ask the questions more. I wish more people had come tonight at the information meeting, but we can still go forward from here and hear people's concerns and address them. One thing that was mentioned tonight is writ in regards to the RVs, and I certainly support the idea of increasing that number slightly. But I also recognize that individuals sometimes try and work this system to their advantage and end up with more RVs than really is appropriate. And I think most of us are in favor of zonation that prevents non-compatible land uses being next to each other. I've heard sometimes people talk about zonation not being important. And even though we are a big county and there's a lot of space, the zonation is still important. If you buy a house in town and decide to bulldoze it and put in a gas station, your neighbors have a right to complain and say, "We don't want a gas station or convenience store in a residential area of town." And I think the same is true of agricultural zones and other zones. I think they have a role, and I encourage the county to look after that zonation. I also want to say that I think rules are important and should be followed, and even though I might want to speak for 10 or 15 minutes, I don't think I came here expecting that I could. And I think it's fair for everybody, when they understand the rules, to follow the rules, whether it's in the community or in the county bylaw meeting. I also think there are some little things in this bylaw that do seem, I do have trouble understanding, and I support people's questions about them, and think they should be looked at. But I, personally, one of my own interests is in the subdivisions. And I encourage the county to continue to look at how it handles subdivisions. I like the efforts that are made in this bylaw to restrict subdivisions further from the roads. I personally would welcome some tightening of subdivision policy in the other Ag Zone that's closer to the roads. I don't personally feel like we need the ability to divide a quarter section into four pieces and still have it under agricultural zonation. There is an important need to have people be able to subdivide sometimes, or a family member to come onto the land. There is a place for, I'm not suggesting there be no subdivision ever, but I do feel that the current bylaw has been more free than it needed to be in order to preserve agriculture and agricultural zonation. I think agriculture's important for our society, it's important for this community, and it is part of the economics. And sometimes we stomp on that by allowing too many other uses. I don't know what else to say, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Marsha Ripley, and I live in this county. We farm and ranch in Spring Cooley, we own land, and we rent land that we farm. And as I've listened here tonight, I just feel like I should thank these men for all that they've done, and all the work that they've done. Though it might not have been what we hoped or wanted, they still invested their time, and we do owe them some loyalty as our elected officials. I have a concern with this bylaw. I've read it, I've looked over it. My biggest concern with this is that it was not printed by my council members, it was drafted by the old man planning commission. I think they have their own agenda. And the reason I think they have their own agenda, I feel, is evidenced in this document. Because in almost every instance, it says things, whether it's having a rock on your property, or whether, whatever. If the old man planning commission can rescind that, and they can say, "Hey, well, in your case, it's okay." Because they use words that, in the opinion of the municipal planning commission, if it's deemed necessary by the planning commission, if it is not satisfactory to the planning commission or the development officer, I think this leaves too much responsibility to someone else who doesn't really care. If you have someone who doesn't like you, or someone who has some personal vendetta against you, here's your mandate to go ahead. I also think it is not, it hasn't been the objective of any of these men, to mislead us or to do us harm. I believe that they all have our good, our good will at heart, and I appreciate that. But I think we need to look at it again. And I think we need to remember that, you know, like it's been said, we're not Calgary, we're not Edmonton, we're still country hicks, or whatever we want to call it. And we want, we want our rights and freedoms. We want to be who we are. I'm the fourth generation, my children and grandchildren in the fifth and sixth generation that have lived in this county. I've never lived anywhere else, so I can't compare it to anywhere else. But I love living here, and I love the freedoms, and I love living on my farm. And I appreciate that I've been able to build a new house on my farm, and I've had very, I have had no problems. And I appreciate that. I'm not a developer, but I have a daughter who wants to build on our farm. I've had no problems with her being able to build there, and I appreciate that. And I realize there are exceptions, and I realize there are all kinds of things, but let's work together. We can work together. We're a pioneer community who came and settled this land, and we can work together and do it our way. We don't have to listen to someone with other interests. I know you guys are perfectly intelligent. I know you can do this. And I still have trust in you that we can do this, but not, not the old man river planning commission way. Let's do it our way.
Thank you very much. That's the end of those who have phoned in and wanted to be on the list. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address it? Okay, if you could just come up here and line up and just take a couple of minutes, we'd be glad to hear from you all. Sure to skip the name, or you're wrong.
My name's Megan Pearson, I'm from De Sappickimble. We just met a month ago, under the premise of this being a free land. We come from Eriar, Alberta, where there are these kinds of restrictions, legislations, and regulations imposed on all of us, so that people can no longer be self-reliant, self-sufficient. One of the things that disturbs me greatly are all of your regulations and restrictions on renewable energy. We are living in a time where being green is like the end thing. My husband and I came here because that's something that's important to us, to be self-reliant, which is something that everybody who came to Cartston and originally settled this land, my husband's born and raised here, was wanting to do. They wanted freedom from oppression, they wanted freedom from people dictating how they should or should not live. And in putting all of these big city regulations and restrictions on us, you are allowing the worldly agenda of control and reliance upon government to impose on our freedoms. And I think that is wicked. I think that it is wicked in the bad way, not as like, yeah. I think that it is time that we can take this man out and say, "This is what we want, this is why we have this land, and let's use it for what we want it for. Let's be self-reliant, let's be self-sufficient, so we have the ability to help and lift others around us in these trillintimes."
My name is Mary Ford, I'm from Edna. This is bogus. You guys expect us to follow all your bylaws, but who made you guys God and above the bylaws? This meeting isn't legal, but you guys can do whatever you want, but yet we have to follow your bylaws, or we're fined or in jail? Who's gonna fine you guys and put you in jail after tonight?
My name is Nicole Kemp. I was not born here, but raised here, and currently in Edna, but soon to be within the town's cartstop limits. So I probably won't get an applause after my statement to debate what I should say in this lovely crowd, but something that, you know, we received these outlines coming into this meeting from a gentleman here. One of his points was acting outside of the municipal government act, is acting outside the law. And, you know, with that being said, I went through the municipal government act, and interestingly enough, in Part 2, Division 1, it says, "A council may pass bylaws for municipal purpose respecting the following matters: A, the safety, health, and welfare of people, and the protection of people and property." I'm gonna skip a few that don't necessarily apply. C, nuisances including unsightly property. C, businesses, business activities, and personal, persons engaged in business. And H, wild and domestic animals and activities in relation to them. So it's funny that some statements are being made that council is acting outside the MGA when some of these regulations are perfectly well within the MGA. Now, the point, I'm not making a case for cosmetics or landscaping, so I don't want people to misunderstand that. The point that I would like to make is that people haven't had the opportunity to educate themselves and to go through these bylaws, and to go through other legislation, to know their rights and to understand them. I have read through the bylaw, the proposed bylaws, three times. I've read through the current bylaws, I've read through the MGA, I've read through current legislation and building codes, and it's crazy, the amount of stuff that I've read through. I still don't understand, there's still aspects that I have questions about, and so I just ask council, one, that they allow us the opportunity to ask those questions and to debate some of those valid issues, and, two, to keep in mind those rights that include safety and fiber issues and things in security and things like that, because I think sometimes those get forgotten, forgotten in people's concerns about their land. And I wanted to say thank you for your guys' efforts. I think you've really invested a lot of time and a lot of thought into these things, and I hope you continue to do so, and continue to take the insight of the community when proceeding with these decisions. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more. May I have a raise of hands, how many more would you come up? Okay, this may be the last, and we'll have comments by, I don't know where, so if you see, then we'll have comments by the administration, final comments, and any questions the council may have for the administration and the speakers, and we'll be brought down.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Alfonso Kershaw, I live in Spring Cooley. I'm in the shape of a skeleton, lady. However, I have worked for my children, I've worked and saved every penny, nickel and dime to have the property which we own, we call our own. And we are in agreement that we should do the best we can to make this country, our house, as beautiful as it can be. But I do not like to be told how to do it. I feel, and I'm sure that everybody else agrees with that, that this bylaw infringes our land and all our rights and privileges. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
My name is David Steffen. I'm from Hartleyville. There's something that we enjoy in Hartleyville, all 10 of us, is something called peace. And having studied the fundamental principles upon which peace resides on it, I can state confidently that when freedom is suppressed, peace cannot exist. Has not history showed us this time and time again? Or we not all firsthand witnesses to this tonight? That when freedom is suppressed, peace cannot exist? I must applaud you for your good intentions. It appears that you have a true desire to serve the people. However, there is a famous quote that states, "The road to hell is paved with good intentions." Has not every great tyrant of the past been brought to power based on his good intentions? But yet, their actions and the results thereof were atrocious. The means by which they went about achieving their great intentions were less than virtuous. It appears that we don't need good intentions at this time. It appears that we don't need good intentions at this time. It appears that we need men that understand the fundamental principles of freedom. It appears that we need men that will take a stand for truth, a stand for freedom, and a stand for peace. And at this time, I recommend that council rescinds the first reading of this bylaw, and rethink the means by which they go about to achieve their great intentions. And if not, it appears that the people will take it upon themselves to facilitate change.
Does the administration make comments? Do you want to make clarifications based upon your career? Does any of the councils have any last questions they would like to ask of the administration If there's none then, I'd like to thank you all for your attendance. I would like to ask for a motion from council to adjourn the public hearing. What we do after the adjournment is then, at their next council, public council meeting, this will be on the agenda, we'll be discussing where to go from here. But we do need time to consider all these comments here. But right now, we can't do anything until we close this hearing. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the closed public hearing. Any more discussion with the council? All agreed?
I just have a question, I'm sorry. Will you say this even how will we know? I'm sorry, I can't, never.
It will be in the public session, the second.
So whatever your decision is in public, say something. Is it like on your website? Would you put it in the public?
Yes, yes, it will be on the website. The minutes are on the website. And we'll probably be on channel 32 on these [inaudible]. They're starting to come, like we've got a trend once. But we have a motion to end the public hearing. All agreed, raise your hands. This means that, Nen, we sure appreciate your input, but this is very helpful to us, and we'll definitely take into consideration. Thank you very much.